Time to start our public hearing for Office 28. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Public hearing number one in order to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on GovDeals.com. Janet Thurman.
These vehicles and equipment has been turned in. They're in poor condition and no longer needed for the department, so we're asking for permission to surplus them and to sell them on GovDeals.
Any questions? Question, pardon? Now, we'll go right into our regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
O Heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for another opportunity to come in and do the business of the City of Hammond. We pray, O Heavenly Father, that we are fair, that we just, and we do everything to benefit the citizens of this great city. We pray, O Heavenly Father, that we do everything right and in order, and everything that is pleasing and in sight. We pray, O Heavenly Father, for each and every family in this city. We pray for the City of Hammond. We pray for the State of Louisiana, and we pray for these United States of America. These in all blessings, we ask in the name of your precious Son, Jesus. To God be the glory. Amen.
Yes, sir.
I'd invite all active and retired military to ring the proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation among God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an account for. I have Ms. Jones and her husband from 1010 Magnolia Street. They have some issues with some trees, and she wanted to come in and speak. And I gave her the opportunity to do so now.
I am Ms. Lovely One Dixon Jones, and this is my husband, Ricky Jones, and we reside at 1100 South Magnolia Street in Hammond, Louisiana. Our issue is concerning some of the trees. There's some trees that are the city-owned that has damaged my property over the last couple of years. I would say probably covering a 10-year period. In this time, I know that roof been damaged at least five times, and the insurance paid for it. Upon the last time, the insurance refused to pay, and they say they were no longer because they do belong to the city. So upon being advised, I was told that my roof had been damaged so much that I could no longer repair it, that I had to get a new roof. Then I spent almost $10,000, $10,000 getting this roof repaired. Excuse me, because I'm emotional at some point, too. But anyway, I met with Mr. Morgan, Director Streets, again, and I met with him several times over the years. And I reaffirmed, you know, my plight about the trees, and I asked him to have the trees moved, because I no longer would, you know, incur any damage or anything that has to do with these trees again. He came and he looked at them, and he said he would only remove some of the trees. Now, he did began. In the back of the house, he took down, in one day, I think, three or four trees. However, these were not, he didn't address the trees on side of my house, which the ones that I'm afraid of. And I reminded him of the upcoming, you know, weather conditions and stuff. And during this time, I am afraid to be in my bedroom. I leave out of my bedroom and go into the living room. But then I learned upon when they came, they told me it wouldn't do me no good if I moved out my bedroom and go to the other side of my house. Because when any of those trees that was remaining, and I think it's five of them, any of them fall, then it was going to flatten my house and my neighbor's house. And I learned today, when Mr. Morgan and, I guess he brought the contractor that was supposed to see about the three that he approved to be moved, if it fall the other way, it's going to fall on Ms. Spears' house. So either way, these trees are a danger. And I did talk, after talking with Mr. Morgan, he talked with the mayor. And the mayor, and Mr. Morgan then called me. He informed me when he put me on the speaker that Mr. Morgan was with him. And it's sad to say that I heard some of the same things that Mr. Morgan was telling me, you know, and really that to no care for my loss of life, the damage to my property, nor the fact that I also told him that my car presently is damaged, my hood because of the pine cones and stuff that was falling out of what the particular tree that I was most concerned with, the pine that known to pop, the widow maker. But most of all, I was given a whole lot of excuses as to why the trees could and couldn't be moved. But when it was posed to me, as it was said, that, let me say it the way that I best remember, if I was that concerned for my life, then I could move the trees at my own cost, and the city would take away the debris. And this, when they came in, they did the first, you know, couple of trees swiftly, so I thought this was going to be taken care of. And then it started to be procrastination and delays and this, that, and other, and I just don't want it to be as it seemed to me. And I say that the officials involved in it now may be more concerned with, you know, the positive image of the mayor pending election, this. I don't care about any of that. I care about my loss of life, and I care, I care that the stand that the, and the view that the city at this point is taking. They tell me about healthy trees, not having enough money in the budget to take all the trees down, or the danger to their men to remove the trees. Several things were said to me, but again, I could do it at my cost. I would like to have, there's two trees that's remaining that's in question that had not been approved. The other three, they said they would remove them. And as I understood this morning, my husband was out with them, and the guy that, well, he and, you know, had got to come and look at the trees that he, the three that he was removing, he said he could get to them by Friday. The other two still have not been addressed, but yet, there's no reason not to move them. I think the, just the potential loss of life should be considered more than you telling me about you can't move trees for everybody and this and that. It's, it's no excuse, and it's unacceptable to stand.
Okay, after your conversation with me and Robert on the phone last week, he and I wrote out there, "We don't have the equipment to cut the trees that high." Janet, did y'all get the vendor? And he's lined up with us now. So we have a vendor that's coming in that's going to top the trees at least low enough to where we can go in and finish them out. There's also a tree on the other side of the ditch that is robbing, that they're going to take out as well. Robert Williams is an arborist. He knows about trees. If there's a tree that's going to stay there remaining, it's because the tree's healthy, and it also helps the bank stay in place. The root, I would, I would probably say they're not going to take the stumps out for that very reason as well on the trees that they take out. That being said, it's been addressed with me, they're going back out to cut the trees. But sir, you were out there with them today. Which tree, did they tell you exactly which trees they were cutting down?
The two in the, further back by the back in the very first tree. Our main concern is that pine tree.
So they weren't taking the pine tree out, as far as you're concerned?
No, that one next to it. And those are the ones that we were mainly concerned about.
So there are two trees that are going to be left that you were informed about today?
It is.
But they still prohibit us from using our backyard.
Look, ma'am, I drove to your house. That backyard, you have a lot of use to that backyard. You can drive a car past your house.
Can I get the building that I want to purchase back there?
Oh, you want to put a building in your backyard? That's a different story.
For my family.
Okay, that has nothing to do with the trees.
Well, they can't get the building back there because it's not enough room, because the trees are stopping them from pushing it back there.
So that might be the reason why Robert Morgan said that you can cut the trees down, that he wasn't going to cut down if that's what you want to do.
No, he had no idea about that, not until I mentioned it to him later, that that was one of the, I told him, I am afraid, which I am terrified, these trees has continued to drop on my house. Almost every year, limbs come out of these trees and drop onto my house, has damaged my house. You all have records that my husband has sent emails and letters, and we have addressed this with the city over the years. And like I said, it didn't bother me, because, I mean, the insurance took care and da-da-da, but we just put a new roof on. I'm not going to repair that roof again at my cost. I won't do it.
He's taken down, what, four trees so far, or something like that?
Four. That's in the back of the house. That has nothing to do with the ones that's infringing upon my right to get to my property or falling onto my house.
Mr. President, I have a question, if you don't mind. Are the trees on city property?
Yes.
So, just so, so that's the concern you have. So it's city's trees on city property impacting your house?
Yes.
I was just trying to make sure, I thought they were your trees.
No, it's the city, they city-owned trees, yes.
And the city's actually to take them down at your expense?
Yes, he told me that if I, he said if I, if I was that concerned for my life, then looked like I wouldn't have a problem removing those trees. And as the other workers was there, he referred and looked at them like, "Do you agree?"
All the trees, though, thus far, have been taken down with the city funds and the city workers and the city equipment.
Except one.
And the three trees that are coming down by the contractor will be paid for by the city.
Absolutely, to my understanding.
So the two remaining trees are the ones that are questioned?
They leaving two trees there, and one of them is right across from my bedroom window.
It's right on the edge of the creek. If you go to Magnolia, you take a right, go to the creek, and 1100 is her house. You can see, nice house, well-kept house, pretty house.
Why wouldn't it be a well-kept house? Significant.
Thank you. But also, as when the, when the mayor...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what was significant about a house being well-kept.
Well, easy for you to have a secret house, it is, but if you want to make a...
When I addressed the mayor and Mr. Morgan also, and he said they were coming out, I asked them when, and then that's why I was mentioning the delay. He said he didn't know when. Knows the time when Mr. Morgan, any of them come out, they tell me, I go out there, speak with them, do whatever I need to show them, blah, blah, blah. He, he never gave me a time nor a date, definite time, date, anything.
We went out the next morning and looked at it. He called you after the fact.
No, he did not call me.
I got a question for you. You, when you were speaking with me, you told me that you ended up having to buy two to put over your brand-new car because the pine cones was damaging your car.
Exactly. And I did not try to get my hood and stuff fixed simply because if they wanted to see it, it's out there, and it's yet that way. And that's why I wanted to meet with the man. I told him, I said, "Let me know, because I would like for you to see my car. I need you to see what I'm talking about." He said, "There's no need." He could see the car. I said, "Not if I'm not here. I want to know when you guys are coming." To be honest with you, I've been dealt with rudely, unfairly, all of, it just don't make sense. This is a, what I told them, and I keep stressing, this is a potential loss of life. Had it been your wife, as I stated to you before, and Mr. Morgan, this wouldn't be a question about these trees. Those trees would be down. But anybody, anybody with this kind of situation going on should be dealt with the same way fairly. Taxpayer, this is your property, you're responsible for maintaining it, and you have proof that it has damaged my house multiple times. So this shouldn't be a question at this point.
Absolutely, when it comes to safety. Every tree on that lot has come down that he deemed it needed to come down. Those trees are there that are going to stay.
Exactly, but you keep telling me about safety. You're telling me how healthy the trees are. I don't care how healthy, how young, how old, they put, they put a danger to my life.
That's how you look at it.
And it shouldn't be that way.
I have two healthy trees next to my house, and I like them there for the shade.
And as I told you, I don't have a problem with shade nor paying my life bill.
Robert Morgan is an arborist. He's going to go out there, he's going to take down the trees that need to be taken down.
And again, you're telling me that these trees are more important, these healthy trees are more important than the potential loss of my life, or human life?
Absolutely not.
And I don't, not? So what are you saying, then?
What do you think I'm saying? Absolutely not, they're not more important than...
Then move them. That's simple. If they're not as important as my life, move them.
We're moving all the ones that need to be moved.
This is not, this is not something that's, you know, diabolical or wild. It's not, it's just straight, it's simple. If that tree life is not more important than mine, move the danger.
The danger of the trees that are impaired of being removed.
The tree falling that has proof that they has fallen many a time, leave. You all had left a tree or limb hanging for almost two weeks before you all come to cut it down out that same tree we talking about. I had one fall, you all had to come and remove it. My house is approximately 45 feet long, probably longer now, because we added. But the tree fell in the back and came reach all the way to the front yard, and you all had to come remove it. These trees, I don't know if it's the ground, I don't know if it's the trees, I don't know the problem, but I know they continue to fall, break, and they fall and break onto And they need to stop. They're sad.
It's being addressed, ma'am.
Yeah. It's being addressed, and wherever we going to have to take it, that's where we going to take it, because I'm not, I'm not standing for no more, no more limbs, trees, or anything to fall on my house. And I'm tired of being afraid to sleep in my own bed when it's storming. You, you think that's right? To hold on to a tree?
It's being addressed.
Mr. President, you, you know, obviously, you addressing the council, so, you know, it's, you think it's necessary for, for maybe to make sure that the council's a part of that process, those discussions, you know, maybe the council, Mrs. Beard, this is her district, can participate in those conversations to make sure that our citizens are being, you know, being, their issues are being addressed. I'm sure the administration is going to do the best they can to get those things resolved, but if the council so wishes, it's your request, Mr. President, to have somebody else present, I mean, I think that would be appropriate. Like I said, I'm sure the administration wants to resolve the problem, but if you're coming, asking, addressing us as a council, I'm assuming you've already addressed the administration, which it seems like you guys have, and I'm sure that we are a separate body, and maybe we can support, you know, that conversation, just to make sure that the council...
That's the reason I came, so you all came to me.
I mean, and there's no reason why, you know, I think, there's no reason why if you're having a meeting that your councilwoman can't be there anyway. If you request her to be there, she can always participate and help, you know, you know, navigate that conversation. But that would be up to you to decide, but you know, you're probably going to welcome and invite your councilperson to that meeting with you.
I understand the problem. Earlier today, right down 51, there's a pine tree that recently snapped and splintered, and half of it fell into the street, and they've cleaned that up out the street, but the rest of the tree is still, because it just happened the other day. And we, pine, pine trees are known...
They widow makers. I said, Nicky.
To snap even in the, in good weather, not only bad. So, and then when we talking about trees that are over 80 feet tall...
Exactly.
That would take out, not maybe, not just your house and the neighbor next door, but maybe three houses in a row. So that's, I understand your concern. I wouldn't want any pine trees around me. And if the, if leaving the root system there would prevent the erosion of the embankment, then, you know, if we can move some funds or find a way, then that would alleviate both problems. Your fear and uncomfort, I mean, you're supposed to be comfortable at home when you can't be comfortable anywhere else. And so to be always in constant fear, and when you think about the fact that you're in the six months of hurricane season, to be in fear, and then as we know, like...
That's a pressure.
There hasn't been a hurricane, but yet that pine tree right down 51 recently splintered. I understand your, you know, your plight, and I feel for you, so if it's anything that can possibly be done, we will be trying to look into that for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Andre, this situation here, can I get your opinion on what we need to do here? Is it liable for...
If the tree is defective, if it's diseased, if it's rotten, and if it's rotten by appearance, then you have liability, that causes a problem. If it's a healthy tree, then, in an act of God, whether that be wind, hurricane, rain, causes something to fall, you're not going to be liable. It's up to the city to remove trees, and it gets difficult when hurricane threatens the whole city, every tree could be, could be falling in a hurricane. If you're asking for my liability assessment, the tree would have to be defective, so the city would be responsible.
But normal maintenance would be expected to prevent things that would not be...
Yeah, I mean, if there's a limb hanging, or if it's hanging and dangling from the tree, that ought to be taken care of.
That's just normal maintenance, right.
Well, they already said that, that when we first addressed these trees, whether they're tall, they have grown to 80 feet, and they find a difficulty as to how to take them down now, even with professionals, they saying it's difficult. You think over any more time, it's going to get better? No, it's going to get worse, and even the tree is going to get worse. And again, I'm going to say, there's already evident that these trees has constantly fell. All of them, limbs have come out of them, and right there onto my house. So this is not a, a regular situation, I would say extenuating. You know, it's other, it's other issues that make it different from the normal person having a tree and wanting it removed. It's, they just causing problems. And not, not just problems where you say, "Oh, I get over it." Money is being spent. And if they are your trees, and you're supposed to maintain them, and they causing a problem, then I have a problem with me keep spending my money out, or even my insurance paying for it, because it's not their responsibility, nor mine. So I would think, as in good health, preventative measures, and just common decency for another person's life. This is a no-brainer, but...
Okay, Mayor, you know about this, y'all could get it together?
Well, Robert's going out there, they had, they needed a boom truck that went, I think, 60 feet. This company came in and applied to be a vendor for the city, because we didn't have one that had insurance. They're now a vendor of the city. This took place on Friday. As of now, we have a vendor that can go out there and do it. Apparently, they met with the gentleman and told him what they were going to do, and they're going to top the trees, take a tree that's on the other side of the ditch as well, and trim back whatever healthy tree Robert deems healthy. I don't know if that's a tree that's keeping your building from going to the back of your house or not, but I'm sure Robert's going to make the right choice. And if not, after it's done, we'll step back and revisit it if the council feels fit, or Janice to step in and have a conversation as well.
Well, let me say this, if I, if I can. When I spoke to Mr. Morgan, like I say, we spoke in length. At the end of our conversation, he told me, and I told him, after I said I wouldn't incur no more, you know, damages or this and that from a tree, and told him how I felt about, you know, my loss of life and the way the city was viewing us handling this situation. And I told him that I would seek out the other officials to get this resolved. He said to me that he would not oppose me, you know, coming to the council, or even you talking to the mayor, to have these trees removed. Now, his, his, this did not change. He didn't start to go back to what he originally said until after he spoke with you.
Well, as an arborist, I'm going to listen to him. He knows trees, he certified in it.
Like I said, I'm going to say what he told me. He would not oppose it.
Like you said, Mr. President, I think it's going to be up to them to figure that out, and if Council Beard is there, and, you know, maybe we, if we need to be involved, we'd have to get something from the administration to request any expenditures, because that's kind of where the process works. So, you know, hopefully, you guys can get that resolved, and we can, everybody be safe, and everybody can be happy with the process. So, it's up to you, Mr. President.
Yes, I am, I'm just, yes. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Hey, Ms. Jones, thank you too.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, you got...
Yes, we had a great hot August night. We had one incident, where I think Tanya was there and said, the crowd pretty much got it calmed down and started dancing right after till the end of the night. But we had the biggest hot August night, I think, we ever had. It was a good night overall, and very well attended, so very proud of DDD and the efforts that they put into the night this past Friday. Also, update on the swimming pool. Looks like, talking to the engineer, he's putting everything together as far as the fittings for the, the spec sheet for the bid. We're trying to push for an opening of July 4th at the latest, so it's not going to be as early as we'd like, but that's the date that they feel like they're going to be able to get this pool open this year.
Do we have a design?
Yeah, it's very much like the first design when the first committee was put together. It's eight lanes with a swim out, and...
Can we get a, can we get that information?
Soon as complete, sure.
What's, what's the, what's the timeline on that?
He was finishing up the bathrooms. There are 10 bathrooms, and he phased two out to the outside, so people in the park can use bathrooms there as well. So they should have those in a few weeks.
So, so can you give us, so can you give a better description of what the, what it looks like, or is there, is there a description of it that we can see?
Is that the little L-shaped?
No, it's a square pool.
I mean, square, but it had the little bump out?
Eight lanes, eight lanes, and the bump out is on one of the shoulder ends. We're saying, he said he's going to have the diagram with the bathrooms completed in a week or so, and we'll send you the full design.
Okay.
But July 4th, we're...
Is there a budget, is there a budget for the pool?
Well, the budget is 1.7.
So it was approved, so they were able to get it?
That's not his budget as approved yet, but that's what we have...
But is there a proposed budget? Has he been able to price the project out?
He's finished drawing it up shortly, in a few weeks, and then we'll have a diagram for you to look at, and then hopefully, his budget, once the engineer finishes up, tallying up all his fittings and everything that goes into the pool and the equipment, then we'll have a full budget.
Are there any new business here, like to be recognized? If not, prove of minutes.
Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Resolution, none, old business, none, new business, number one.
Number one, a resolution to approve diners located at 1406 Quarven Road, Hammond, Louisiana, to sell high-low alcohol on premise. The owner is Dinette LLC, Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is a bar that is in the grandfather process. It's only been closed for about a month, so it's being reestablished as the existing bar, and is within its limits. They have met all of the requirements that I've asked them to meet. All the inspections have been completed and done. I am asking at this time that the approval be based on, I am waiting on a clearance on her license for... for a background check that I was not able to complete today. It can be done as early as tomorrow morning, but I will not release anything until that is completed and okayed. So, I am asking for the approval based on that being cleared and okay. And I do have the owner here tonight if you have any questions. I'm gonna ask her to come up for y'all. Ms. Ned.
Welcome back to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Annette Jackson. I live at 45249 Tango Wood Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403.
Annette's been a member of the community for a long time, and I want to thank you once again for selling the property at fair market value for Jackson Park.
Thank you.
Which was her family's land. So, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
It's turned out to be a really great park.
Thank you.
Question.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Question to approve.
And that's subject to the receipt of the acceptable background check that Jenny talked about?
Subject to the receipt of the acceptable background check.
Councilman Hood.
Okay. That shouldn't be a problem. She just got out of there. She's coming right on back soon.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number two, a resolution to approve Holy Ghost Parish Fall Festival in October 26, 27, 28, 2018, within the boundaries of Magnolia Street from W., from West Colorado to Railroad Track and Northwest Railroad Avenue from West Colorado to Railroad Track. Ms. Micah.
Hello.
Give us your name and address for, for record.
Micah Bujal, chairperson for the Holy Ghost Parish Fall Festival, PO Box 481, Natalebany, Louisiana, 70451.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood. Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number three, a resolution authorizing Holy Ghost Parish Fair Committee to sell alcohol on Friday, October 26, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Saturday, October 27, 2018, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sunday, October 28, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, within the boundary set.
So, move.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number four, a resolution authorizing Holy Ghost Parish Fair Committee to obtain a waiver of the Open Container Law for the following dates and times. Friday, October 26, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Saturday, October 27, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sunday, October 28, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, within the boundary set.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number five, a resolution to approve change order number one, roof replacement at the evidence building, adding demolition of approximately 60 LF of a three-course parapet wall to allow for the roof to extend to the outer brick edge in the amount of $19,900. Janice Thurman.
Um, while the contractor was in the process of removing the flashing on the interior side of the roof, it was discovered that the parapet was not in suitable condition to receive the new flashing. So, we had to make some changes in the specifications to extend the roof out where the parapet, parapet existed. So, we're just asking approval.
Where are these funds coming from?
Where's what?
Where are these funds coming from?
I assume they're coming out of the Robert Morgan's street account.
Motion to approve. The head account? Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number six, a resolution to reappoint George Anthony to the Hammond Housing Authority Board for a five-year term ending May 31, 2023. Mayor Panapinto.
Ah, George and Ms. Eva both served on the board graciously and, ah, ah, willing to do it again, and, ah, I recommend that you approve, ah, both back to the Hammond Housing Authority Board, please.
I have a question, Mr. President. When does, um, when does the res- when does the term for George Anthony's expire?
I think both of their terms have, have expired.
So, again, when, when does the term expire?
I think we have this term expired on May 31, 2018.
So, we're just reappointing, so they...
We are. The Hammond Housing Authority just brought it to our attention that the board appointments needed to be redone.
Right, okay. Okay, I was, well, what I wanted to know.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Number seven is will be Ms. Eva Felderford, ending July 2nd, 2023.
And I guess I should have asked a question on the other one too, Mr. President. What's the, the normal term for a board member for that position?
A five-year term.
And there's no term limit?
No, there's no term limit.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Final adoption of an ordinance, final adoption of an ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on govdeals.com.
So, move.
Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Introduction of an ordinance set for public hearing, number one. Introduction of an ordinance to amend the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019 in accordance with the procedures set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm introducing the ordinance to amend the budget for 2018-19. I have closed the books, and there is a variance, so I just want to amend.
Mr. President, I know it's the only up, up for introduction, but it seems a little early.
Yes. Ah, usually we do it after the audit, but we can amend anytime. There is a variance, so you can do multiple times.
Would, would you mind providing us with a copy of updated consolidated budget sheet, please, at the next meeting?
Sure.
I'd like, with the new...
Mm-hmm.
amounts, okay.
I think there is a link already provided, so...
I think it just has the amount of the budget.
And it just has fun numbers, not fun names.
Right, but we can send that tomorrow for you.
Perfect.
Hey, would you, but Tom, you put that in a book for us if you get that to us?
If you bring the book, we'll be happy to take it to the sheets.
Congratulations. Ding 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 ding.
I have a new budget. I just put it in a book.
I know, I hold that show.
I'm just gonna be in my office for some other work, so I can...
Wait, we're not gonna get it filled out for you.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for September 11, 2018.
Motion to approve. So, move.